All right. Good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, and we are going to call to order the in-home supportive services public authority with a roll call from the clerk, please.
Good morning. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with supervisors Alejo, Lopez, and Phillips appearing via video conference and supervisors Ruasque and Adams appearing in person.
Excellent. Thank you. We have one. Are there any additions or corrections to the closed session agenda?
There are none, Chair.
Okay. We have one item for the in-home supportive services public authority. Are there any public comments on our closed session for IHSS public authority?
No. Yeah, I just promoted you. Sorry.
All right. Seeing no public comment, we will close public comment and recess to closed session for that agenda item. But before we do that, we will call to order the Monterey County Board of Supervisors with a roll call from the clerk.
Good morning. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with supervisors Alejo, Lopez, and Phillips appearing via video conference and supervisors Ruasque and Adams appearing in person.
Is there any changes or corrections to the closed session agenda?
There are none, Chair.
Great. Thank you. We have a closed session for the Board of Supervisors today, item 1A through C. Are there any public comments on our closed session agenda this morning?
Hi, good morning. Wes White, Salinas, Monterey County Homeless Union, co-president. In regards to the Marina Coastal parking lot, we had that ad hoc committee that your staff was like, "Oh, we're going to look for a place. We're going to look for a place." And now we got a notice saying that on the 8th, people are going to be tagged, and on the 12th, they have them go. And it's like, where can they go to? I mean, these are still some pretty vulnerable health, you know, dangerous, critical. They need electricity. They need running water. They need a home. This is their home. We were promised, we were giving overtures to, we were going to find a place for these folks. And I'm just telling you, I mean, if you don't respect their existence, you better expect resistance. Because what's going to happen? It's not going to look pretty, and it's going to look really bad. I mean, you folks are starting to come out looking a lot like murderers, and liars, and thieves, and robbers. Just please stop being that stereotype. You know, don't lawyer up. Don't give me two sides of the same coin. Give me real. You said you're going to help. That's going to just destroy all kinds of people's lives. I got two, three people I'm thinking of that might actually die. I'm scared to death of that. And you're in charge of this, McKee. You have one way or the other you can go. And if you're just playing both sides, you got to be real, man. Stop the sweeps.
Thank you for joining us today, Wes.
Hi, my name is Rita Acosta. I just, I don't understand how you guys can keep the city, the county, to keep moving people around, knowing that there isn't any place to go. They're still moving people off the sidewalks and everything. And I know the city passed a city code for people to sleep in the right-of-way, and people are still getting moved off of there, you know. And I know, where is it that on the sidewalk is that are they able to go? Because I put a tent out, and I got a ticket for trespassing, and I was on the sidewalk where they said, you know, I had a big sign, "This is where my city wants me." But, you know, is it really where you want people to go on the sidewalks or be out in the open? Because if you have a designated area where they're going to go, they're going to start putting tents up everywhere. Chinatown is getting cleared out. They don't have no place to put it. I mean, everybody moved back to the tracks. Waste of taxpayers' dollars moving them out. They're going back in. They have to have a place to go ordinarily, so they don't go back there. You know, and I know it's a health issue and safety issue and stuff, but where do you really want people to go? They're going to keep going back there. And a lot of them end up getting hurt. People are getting sick. They're dying. I had a just close friend that just had a heart attack yesterday morning. We need to do something for real, because it's just like, keep telling people just to move and go. They got to go. They can't be. And not have no direction for them. That's pretty sad. I mean, nobody wants to be told, "You can't be here, but you got to go." What would you do if you were in their shoes, you know? It's pretty scary having to worry and look over your back, the cops and everything. And they're supposed to protect and sure, not threaten.
Thank you for joining us today, Rita. Is there any public comment online on Zoom? If you're with us on Zoom and would like to make public comment on the closed session Board of Supervisors agenda, please raise your hand so that I can call on you. Seeing no hands raised, we'll close public comment and bring it back to recess for closed session items for the Board of Supervisors. We'll be back here at 10:30 for the rest of our agenda. Thank you.
Hey Nick, Nick, you're on mute.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you, Juan.
Javi, can you hear me?
I can. Do I see Juan is on there? Do you know if Mariana from Salinas Valley Fridays on there yet?
Oh, I can hear you now, Javi.
Can you? Okay, good.
Who who were you looking for for me to promote?
I know. I just saw Juan. There you go. He's on there. It's Mariana Redondo from Salinas Valley Friday.
Let me check on the... Okay.
See you then, Javi.
Good morning, Juan. How you doing?
Good morning.
Thank you for coming on, Juan.
My pleasure. Thanks. Thank you for the invite.
I don't see Mariana yet. But it's 10:24, so maybe she's not on yet.
Okay. Texted to make sure she is.
Is Javi on the line?
Yep. Yep.
Please tell it. Tony's here and he says hi.
Javi? Are you there, Javi? Hi, Tony's here in the chambers.
Tony, how you doing?
He said hello. I won't ask him that.
Thank you for coming, brother.
How you doing, brother?
Doing good. Thank you.
Good, man. Hey, Javi, what is my timeline today when I get up?
Uh, two to three minutes.
Got it. Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, Mariana should be on. Can you check on that?
Hi, Javi Ed. Yes, I am here.
Great. Thank you for being there and coming and speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Javi Ed.
Yeah, the one, yeah. The one that didn't have your writing on top of it. That extra page. Let me make it happen. Make a coffee. Yes. And all these supervisors are there as well.
All right, it is ten thirty-three. We are going to call to order, ten thirty-three on Tuesday, November second, two thousand and twenty-one. We're going to call to order the East Garrison Community Services District with a roll call from the clerk, please.
Good morning. Let the record reflect all directors are present with directors Alejo, Lopez, and Phillips appearing via video conference, and directors Root Askew and Adams appearing in person.
Thank you. For anyone who's joining us on, let's see, here on Facebook or on YouTube Live, you're also welcome to hop on over and join us at our Zoom webinar. We're at webinar ID number two, two, four, three, nine, seven, seven, four, seven. We have Spanish interpretation services available here in chambers as well as on Zoom. Could we have that announcement, please, in Spanish?
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Maria. Estoy aquí para los servicios de interprete en español.
Thank you. Let's see here. Next up, I'd like to welcome Edie Frederick to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning. Edith, Edie Frederick is part of Rainbow Speakers and Friends, a volunteer group that presents representative panels of the LGBTQIA+ community. Rainbow Speakers and Friends share personal stories and experiences in order to break down stereotypes and educate the community to create a safer world. Thank you so much for joining us today, Edie. We're so pleased to have you. We'll pass the microphone over to you to get us started with the pledge allegiance.
Please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for joining us today, Edie, and for all of the work that you and Rainbow Speakers do out in the community to to educate our children and just everyone in our community. We really value and appreciate your work. Let's see here. Next up, are there any additions or corrections to our public agenda for East Garrison Community Services District?
There are no additions and corrections.
All right. Is there any public comment for the East Garrison Community Services District this morning? Right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. We have one item on the consent calendar, which is consider finding pursuant to AB three sixty-one, and in order for the Board of Directors to continue meeting remotely, that the COVID nineteen pandemic state of emergency declared by Governor Newsom is still in effect, and the Board of Directors of the East Garrison Community Services District has reconsidered the circumstances of the state of emergency, and the Monterey County Health Officer continues to recommend social distancing measures for meetings of the legislative bodies. Is there any public comment on this consent item? Seeing then, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Adams, a second from Lopez, and we'll take a roll call vote.
Director Leho?
Aye.
Director Phillips?
Aye.
Director Lopez?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Director Root Askew.
Aye. Motion passes. We'll adjourn the East Garrison Community Services District and call to order the Monterey County Board of Supervisors with a roll call from the clerk, please.
Good morning. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with supervisors Alejo, Lopez, and Phillips appearing via video conference, and supervisors Root Askew and Adams appearing in person.
Are there any additions or corrections to our public agenda today?
There are additions and corrections, and that is a correction to the general government consent calendar for item number twenty-six. It is in receipt of a revised attachment B.
Great, thank you. So with item number twenty-six, a revised attachment B. All right. Next up, we have our ceremonial resolutions. We have item number two through seven point one. I would entertain an action on our consent calendar or the ceremonial resolutions calendar.
Move approval of the resolutions.
I'll second that. Is there any public comment? Well, we have a few presentations that we'll proceed with, but is there any public comment on our ceremonial resolutions this morning? All right, we'll bring it back for a roll call vote then.
Supervisor Leho?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root Askew.
Aye. Thank you. So ceremony resolutions have all been approved, and we do have a few presentations this morning. So let's see here. We're going to start with a presentation. We have item number two, which is to adopt a resolution recognizing Irma Cruz Hernandez as Monterey County's two thousand and twenty-one in-home supportive services provider of the year. And I think supervisor, I see supervisor Alejo has your microphone unmuted. But I have supervisor Lopez. Did you have some comments to make for this presentation?
After the presentation, I, yeah, no, I think staff was going to do the presentation, then I had comments.
Oh, okay, great. Well, I'll pass the microphone over to staff for presentations.
Thank you, and good morning, Chair Askew and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. And we have actually three resolutions for you to consider, and which actually you've already adopted. One is. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I think there's just a microphone on in the chamber, so we're getting some backfeed.
Okay, so one of the resolutions is to proclaim November as the National Caregivers Month to honor caregivers throughout the county. The other two are resolutions to recognize two outstanding local caregivers who have opened their hearts and their homes to care for their loved ones and other individuals who need assistance. It is estimated that one in four adults in the U.S. are caregivers, and four point five million just in California alone. Here in Monterey County, we have approximately five thousand IHSS care providers, but many more that are informally taking care of their loved ones. These numbers are only part of the story because each number represents a parent, a daughter, a son, a grandchild, a brother, a sister, and her uncle, who are the primary support for their elderly relatives and or a loved one with a disability. Caregivers are also individuals with their own interests, talents, dreams, and hopes, who must wear multiple hats and juggle different responsibilities. They give selfishly, they love unconditionally, they work tirelessly, and they sacrifice their time and sometimes their own health and well-being to care for their family member in need. So on behalf of the Department of Social Services and the staff at Aging and Adult Services, I want to thank you for the opportunity to recognize and honor family caregivers for their devotion, their strength, and the compassion that they demonstrate daily to the people that need it the most. And thank you so much for adopting all of these resolutions. And with this, I want to introduce you to DSS Management Analyst Nick Lito, who will present our first caregiver award recipient.
Thank you, Diana. So I'm going to speak for Irma Cruz Hernandez and just one of our IHSS provider recruitment flyers has a slogan, "It's one job can change two lives." And I got to tell you, truer words were never spoken for Irma Cruz Hernandez and the ninety-five-year-old IHSS recipient that she cares for. Irma has been providing official IHSS care for her recipient who has no other local family for almost two years now. They first met at their church while Irma's now recipient was receiving IHSS services from another provider. It became evident over time that the IHSS recipient's health was deteriorating, including aggressively progressive dementia. Irma, who by chance was already a registered IHSS provider, got together with some other members of her church and actually got the IHSS recipient moved out of their own home and into Irma's home. Keep in mind that there's no relation between Irma and her recipient, other than they attend the same church. Now, understanding that one of the main goals of our IHSS program is to keep our county's aging and elderly population living as independently as possible, or as long as possible, Irma has taken that goal to a level beyond any expectation by actually moving her IHSS recipient into her own home to continue to provide care, certainly above and beyond the IHSS service hours that have been authorized for her recipient. Irma continues to provide critical IHSS care for her recipient slash roommate and continues to shine as an inspiration, certainly to IHSS staff who've heard her story, but also her surrounding community. It's not easy, and it can definitely be overwhelming. By way of this resolution, Monterey County IHSS wishes to thank Irma for her continued service in the IHSS program and for opening her heart and her home to help someone who couldn't help themselves. The end. Sorry.
Thank you, Nick. I'll jump in and just say thank you to Irma. Reading the resolution in preparation for this meeting, the above and beyond doesn't capture where what you've done for our community for to serve in this particular capacity for twelve years is hard enough itself, right? There's there's over a decade of work that you've put in to make sure that your community is cared for, cared for, but opening the doors to your own home, that place where at night we try to find a place to take our own rest to prepare for the next day. Those words going above and beyond just don't capture it. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of all the residents of District Three and the residents of Monterey County for doing what you do every single day, and primarily that starts with caring and leading with kindness. So thank you for being you, for doing this incredibly tough work, and for setting an amazing example for all of our IHSS workers throughout Monterey County and California. Congratulations, Irma.
Great, thank you. And Diana, and thank you, Nick, for the presentation. We do have a framed resolution. Do we have Irma with us today?
She is on, I believe she's on our Zoom meeting under the name Fabiola Lopez. I think that's her daughter. That's her daughter.
Okay, very good. Well, we do have a framed presentation, a resolution signed by all five supervisors for you, Irma, that we will make sure gets delivered to you where you can display proudly. We appreciate the and value deeply the work that all of our IHSS providers provide in our in our community. So thank you. Thank you. Let's see here.
We do have one more.
Yeah, perfect. I'll pass it right back to you, Nick. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. And I'm actually going to punt it to Vicente Vega with Local SEIU two thousand and fifteen to present the second individual provider of the year.
Hey, everybody, and hello, Board of Supervisors. Like Nick said, my name is Vicente. I'm with SEIU two thousand and fifteen. We represent long-term caregivers across Monterey County. And yeah, I have the privilege today of introducing Adriana Peña. You know, a lot of times the work that caregivers do go unnoticed, and it's definitely underappreciated, even though we know that their work is essential and it's work that will need to continue to to grow in the future. So I definitely think it's important that we we create this kind of space to recognize caregivers for the work that we do. And like I said today, I have the privilege of introducing Adriana Peña. Adriana is someone who is well-known and respected by so many caregivers and members of the community. Adriana actually left her career as a counselor to do caregiving. And as a caregiver, she gives everything she can to those she takes care of and works to ensure that her consumers have an excellent quality of life. As a member of her union's executive board and bargaining team, she has been committed to uplifting the voices of caregivers across the state and working to improve the program and the lives of caregivers and their consumers. She is a true leader in her union, and through all the responsibilities that she has on her plate, Adriana still finds the time for her fellow caregivers, answering their calls and helping to resolve whatever issues they may be facing. Adriana is a real fighter and is never afraid to speak up, whether it's in advocating for her clients in IHSS or fighting for the rights of her fellow caregivers. I'm sure there are many people who have been impacted by the work that Adriana has done, and so many other people who could be here vouching for why she is so deserving of this recognition. And honestly, I could personally be be here talking through countless examples of why Adriana should be recognized. But I'll just say that I'm really happy to see Adriana being recognized today because of her selflessness and commitment to her clients, coworkers, and her community. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to make just a couple of quick comments about Adriana myself. I've had the opportunity to interact with her on numerous different occasions, and it has always been with just such complete pleasure that I have the chance to talk with her and work with her. We shared a story. My, when I was a young girl, my grandmother had a stroke, a devastating stroke, and I helped my mother care for my grandmother in in our home. And talking to Adriana about that gave me such a feeling of of almost like closure. I was able to share with her what was in my heart, and she helped me put a frame around it. And I just am so thankful that she is the leader that she is in our community because she has a special gift, and she's very, very generous with sharing that gift. So I cannot think of anyone that is more deserving, equally deserving as Irma, without question as being honored this year as the as the caregiver of the year by IHSS, and I just want to applaud her and thank her so much.
Thank you, Supervisor Adams, for for that reflection. I think it is exactly who I know Adriana to be. It's just so present with everyone who she works with. And the comments that I wanted to make, and Adriana, we're bringing you over in case you wanted to make a brief comment onto the panelist side of things. But I think it's important to me as we think about we're recognizing both two of our IHSS service providers of the year at the same time recognizing National Family Caregivers Month in Monterey County. And the the thing that really strikes me and stands out to me in the work that Adriana Peña does is really focuses not just on recognizing not just the significance of care that's provided, but really working to advance policy that supports the broader effort to ensure that people have the dignity and right to age in place at home and that caregivers are treated with respect that they earn in the work that they do day in and day out. So Adriana, I just want to personally say thank you and congratulations for the care that you provide, as well as the policy work that you are so committed to to fighting for. It really does make a difference. Adriana, did you want to make a brief comment if we had you on the line?
I'm here. Morning, everyone. I just want to thank my union, IHSS, and all the supervisors. And I really especially, but yeah, I'm happy to get that recognition and also it's an honor to fight for our rights, for our caregivers, and not just for caregivers and consumers, for everyone that is in need. We, I like to work for people, and it's what I do, and I love it. And thank you, everyone, for your words. Thank you. The end.
Thank you. Supervisor Lopez, did you want to say something as well?
Yeah, I just want to say gracias, Adriana, por todo que haces para nuestra comunidad, por nuestras familias, por nuestros amistades. Somos todos, todos los miembros de los supervisores saben que eres una luchadora, y gracias por luchar por nuestra comunidad cada día. Felicidades en este reconocimiento.
Muchísimas gracias.
And Adriana, we have assigned a resolution here as well that we will get, make sure finds its way safely to you, that that just shows some of the appreciation that we have as a Board of Supervisors. So thank you again.
Thank you.
And I'm going to go back to Diana Jimenez, Ms. Jimenez, for the recognizing November 2021 as National Family Caregivers Month in Monterey County. Were there any other speakers for that presentation?
I don't think we have any other speakers. Thank you.
Okay. And I did see Alicia Gaines.
Maybe Irma might want to say something. I'm not sure. I don't think I gave her the opportunity.
Yes, I want to say something, but in Spanish.
Of course. Yes.
Thank you. Yo quiero agradecer a todas las personas que estuvieron involucradas para que yo fuera parte de las que fueron seleccionadas como Adriana y yo, verdad, por ese reconocimiento.
Supposed to be. My apologies.
Porque para mí este trabajo es muy importante. He's been doing various years, depending on personas, y los he respetado, he's had a cariño las personas porque yo quiero que si yo algún día llego a Sara también y que alguien me cuide a mí como yo lo sé cuidado a ellos. Es todo.
Gracias, Irma.
Thank you so much, Irma. We really appreciate and value the work that you do to care for our community. Thank you. And I think we also have here.
Madam Chair, can I quickly translate that?
That would be fabulous. Thank you, Supervisor Lopez.
So just want to share, Irma, I thank everybody who was responsible for having made this recognition possible. But at the end of the day, she shared that she does this work because she hopes that someday if she ever gets to a point where she needs the assistance, somebody will step up and help her the same way that she's helped up, stepped up and to help others. So gracias, Irma, por esas palabras. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Lopez. All right. And then for the, I'm sorry, the National Family Caregivers Month, I think we have Alicia Gaines with us and Richard Kuhn might be with us also from the IHSS Advisory Commission. Nick, did you want to make any other comments?
Oh, I just wanted to say that Alicia, as the Chair of the In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, will be accepting the resolution for National Family Caregivers Month, you know, on everyone's behalf.
Fabulous. And Alicia, we do have a framed resolution that we will make sure, maybe we can plan to come to one of the committee meetings and make a brief presentation and present that to you. But thank you so much for the work that you do on the policy side, really with the advisory, the advisory committee for IHSS. I think it's important, a couple of points I wanted to pull out of the resolution. We have more than 90 million family caregivers in the USA, including almost 5,000 in-home supportive service caregivers in Monterey County. And I think that a lot of people are unaware that we have so many 5,000 caregivers in our IHSS program right here in Monterey County. And so to each and every one of those caregivers, we see you and we value and we appreciate the work that you're doing in our community. Alicia, did you want to make any comments on behalf of the advisory committee?
Can you unmute Alicia, please?
How about that?
There we go. We've got you.
Okay, I am so honored to accept this resolution for the IHSS caregivers' families and people that are working in that capacity. Being a caregiver is my passion. And I just lost my mom recently, but I'm not stopping. She was my client, but I'm not going to stop there. So now I have picked up another client. And it's just, it just warms my heart to be a caregiver. So I can imagine what it does for all the caregivers who are caring for their families, friends, and just people you don't even know. It's just a welcoming and warming and a humbling experience. And once again, I just want to thank the caregivers. And I thank the Board of Supervisors for presenting this resolution to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia, for the work. And our heart followed your grief with the passing of your mother. I know you spent a lot of time caring for her as she aged. So we'll continue to grieve with you for that loss. All right. And we have a resolution, so we will make sure that we get that presented to our IHSS Advisory Committee. And thank you again for your work in our community. Thank you, Nick, for the presentation today. And thank you, Diana Jimenez, as always, for the work that you do serving Monterey County residents. All right. And Vicente Vega, also as well from SEIU 2051, 2015. It's great to see you and thank you for joining us today. All right. Let's see here. Next up, we have item number five, which is to adopt a resolution recognizing the Monterey County Military and Veterans Affairs Office for exemplary service to the veteran and military community throughout 2021. And I think I'm going to pass the microphone over to Supervisor Alejo for a brief presentation on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, once again, bringing forward this resolution to honor the Monterey County Military and Veterans Affairs Office. We want to make this annual tradition to recognize the work that is done throughout the year to serve our active military and our veterans throughout Monterey County and their families. So this resolution says that throughout our nation's history, oh, I want to say that next Thursday of next week, November 11th, is Veterans Day. And because we don't have a meeting on Tuesday, we're taking up this resolution to honor and also recognize all our veterans in our county. But the resolution reads, "Throughout our nation's history, brave men and women in uniform have answered the call of duty to defend and protect our freedom. Veterans form a vital part of our communities and workforce and employees and organizations that engage with veterans, benefit from the diverse set of skills and experiences. The Monterey County Military and Veterans Affairs Office provides advocacy, assistance, and services designed to enhance the lives of Monterey County veterans and active-duty military personnel, their survivors, and families. Despite a year defined by COVID limitation restrictions, Monterey County Military and Veteran Affairs Office adopted and never wavered in its mission throughout through actively participating in 24-hour each events and contacting 1,108 new veteran or service members. The office also had over 10,000 informational requests and made over 2,000 in-person virtual or telephonic benefit appointments while returning an 89% customer satisfaction survey rate. The office filed almost 4,000 individual claim actions on behalf of 1,565 unique veterans and to include 1,200 Department of Veteran Disability Compensation and Benefit Payments and many other accolades achieved this past difficult year. The Military and Veteran Affairs Office was awarded $50,000 by the Board of Supervisors to conduct a homeless veteran stand-down, which served 117 homeless veterans. Therefore, the Monterey County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of all our residents thereof, honors this office and commends them for their selfless, hard work, dedication to all veterans, active-duty military service members, and their families in Monterey County. And today, we are honored to have not only Jason Cameron, which is our Officer of the Military and Veterans Affairs Office, but also Tony Vareta, who was the lead organizer for the Salinas Veterans Day Parade in Salinas, which brings over 10,000 community residents to honor veterans throughout our county. It's the largest event of its kind on the Central Coast. So I'll pass it to Jason.
All right. Thank you so much, Supervisor Alejo, Chair, Ask You, the full board. You know, I really take this resolution on an annual basis to heart because I view it as this board's commitment to the veterans of this county. It's not so much our office, but to the veterans of the county. And we have done amazing things this last year, given the pandemic, given all of the hurdles that were in front of us. We were able to do amazing things, and it was with this board's support that we were able to make that come to fruition. So I'm going to keep it short for the sake of time, but this resolution will live on our wall, in our office, for every veteran that walks through our doors to be able to see and recognize this board's commitment to them through our office. So thank you so much. Thank you again.
Thank you. And next, we have Tony Vareta. We can chambers, I believe, as well.
Good morning, Supervisors. Good morning. Thank you. And just to kind of talk about what Jason was saying, and especially Supervisor Alejo. You know, this isn't a clock-in, clock-out kind of position that they have. This is a person that's dealing with veterans. And they do it day in, day out. Yes, they did have some hurdles to go by through COVID, but yet they went on. You know, you had all these great statistics that we talked about, but at the same time, though, each one of those numbers are a mother, father, and a brother and sister who served their country. And a lot of times, it takes a lot of effort for these veterans to come out and seek help. Many times, they just kind of mold back into society and try to do the best they can. But in many cases, they come back with scars on the outside, and especially on the inside. And this is where Jason's team comes into play. I speak as a veteran and I speak as myself, as a recipient and assistance on this. You know, as we get older, some of these injuries catch up to us. And they've been more than capable, in my case at least, and personally speaking, but in many other veterans and what they do for them. And this is perfect timing, as we're leading into the week of Veterans Day. So Supervisors, thank you very much for acknowledging Jason and his team, and look forward to seeing you all at our parade next Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Vareta. And Madam Chair, I just want to also pay tribute. I got the photo of my father here on the wall. He was a Vietnam-era veteran of the United States Army, and he passed away a year ago. So I attribute to all the veterans who have passed. And also that it's the second day of Dia de los Muertos. We honor all those who have passed on and remember them, their memory and their sacrifice to our nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Lopez. I'll give my colleagues a chance to speak, because I know that this is a topic and area that we all share a commitment to. Supervisor Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, you know, I'm excited to take part in this Thursday's parade. Thank you to Tony Vareta for inviting me out. It's an opportunity to say thank you to our veterans. And here in South County, we recently had the ability, the honor of opening up the Avenue of Honor in San Lorenzo Park, which I know the board has joined me in touring. And it's these investments and memories and to honor the dedication and the sacrifice of folks who've given more than time. It's really blood, sweat, and some have made the ultimate sacrifice. So as we go into this particular week in taking the time to reflect, I also hope that folks will take the time to say thank you. Thank you in person to those that are here who have made that commitment to our nation. And so just look forward to taking part in the different events that will happen throughout my district. There's only a couple this year, but due to COVID, but I do look forward to eating a lot of ribs and a lot of chicken that folks are going to be cooking up for fundraisers for our different veterans groups, as well as participating in that parade. So thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Adams? Thank you. I too just share in the appreciation of everything that is done to help the veterans in our community. Our county has such a rich history of interaction with the military, going back to the founding days of the city and area of Monterey. And I think we can't think about the history of our county without having the association with the military. So it's really very, I'm very thankful that we continue to care for the military, that we continue to pay attention to the needs of the people, not just the veterans themselves, but the family members and all of those. I can remember hearing one of the leaders over at the Defense Language Institute just making the comment that, yes, we care for our men when they're abroad, our servers when they're abroad, but we also care for the families that are here, missing them. And I know that's one of the things that we do a very good job of. And I thank you so much, Jason, for the leadership that you've brought to this office and the attention and the honor that you employ by serving as the leader of it. So thank you so much for all that you do on behalf of the veterans in the military here in Monterey County.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yeah, I just wanted to add my thoughts to. I really think Jason has raised the level of service to our veterans and I've really seen a marked improvement. And just recognizing, and I keep going back since it was my era when I was in the service where I served at Fort Ord for a while, but going back to our recognizing our Vietnam veterans. They went through so much and were so underappreciated by our county for what they did and our nation for what they did. And so we came back and thanking them years after they were malign. Imagine in those days when you went through an airport in a uniform and you got yelled at and spit at, and these people had to return and deal with that. I think it's significant that we're finally recognizing them with the recognition they should have all those years ago. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I have one. Okay, we just took my hands raised. Great. We do also have a framed resolution, so if we could just step down and take a photograph, that would be great. And so many echoes of what my colleagues have said. My dad was born here at Fort Ord. I was raised in a military family. I appreciate the commitment that Monterey County continues to have to support our veterans and their families. And I just want to highlight a few, one thing in particular today, while we've got people paying attention. The Military and Veterans Affairs Office is able to help waive college tuition fees for dependents of veterans and individuals who have served in our armed forces. I encourage anyone who's a student who's headed into college or looking to figure out how to fund their ongoing education. If your family member has served in our armed forces, please do reach out to our Military and Veterans Affairs Office to find out what you might qualify for. Just last year, working through Military and Veterans Affairs Office, they were able to waive almost $1.5 million in college tuition fees for dependents of veterans. And I think that that's this unknown secret benefit that's out there. And if anyone's listening, please pursue this option. I wish that it was something that I would have known about when I was a student. It would have alleviated a lot of stress, financial stress on myself and my family. So thank you for the work that you do, and we'll step down for a quick photograph. All right. And one final presentation this morning. Supervisor Phillips, did you have additional comments? A hand raised.
That was legacy.
That was legacy.
Okay, legacy hand. Very good. So we're going to move right along to item 7.1, which is to adopt a resolution recognizing November 20th, 2021, as Transgender Day of Remembrance in Monterey County. And I'll pass the microphone over to Supervisor Alejo for a presentation.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. We are honored, for the first time, Monterey County is taking up this resolution to recognize November 20th, 2021 as Transgender Day of Remembrance. This day was set aside in 1998 to memorialize all those who have been killed due to anti-transgender hatred or prejudice, and is currently held around the world every November 20th as a day honoring and supporting transgender individuals and calling attention to their ongoing epidemic of violence, transphobia, especially against transgender women of color. This day was created following the 1998 murder of Rita Hester, a transgender woman of color whose murder has yet to be solved. The following year, November 20th, 1999, Gwendolyn Ann Smith created the first transgender Day of Remembrance in honor of Rita Hester and other transgender people whose lives were lost due to violence. The year 2020 marked one of the deadliest years on record of hate violence against transgender Americans, including undocumented transgender immigrants. This day seeks to This day seeks to remember and mourn the loss of transgender and gender nonconforming individuals killed around the world. Many transgender people, adults and youth alike, still face systemic barriers to freedom and equality. All people deserve to live with dignity and respect, free of fear and violence, and protected against discrimination regardless of their gender identity or sexual orientation. And we understand the unique challenges faced by sexual and gender minorities, especially transgender and gender nonconforming individuals, and are taking steps to address them. Trans and gender nonconforming people should not have to fear, have to fear violence and discrimination for the simple act of, of living authentically and expressing their preferred gender identity. The people in Monterey County actively dedicate themselves to the principles of human rights, individual freedoms, equal protection under the law, of just and democratic society. And, and we remain vigilant against hatred and persecution. Therefore, our Board of Supervisors, on behalf of all of our residents, proclaim November 20, 2021 as Transgender Day of Remembrance in Monterey County and call upon all our residents to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists and to celebrate the great diversity of our county. Furthermore, the transgender flag is symbol of the transgender community, organization, and individuals will be flown for the first time in our county's history at the 168 West Alisal Monterey County Government Center. Another flagpoles in Monterey County were requested on November 19th, this Friday, 2021, at noon through November 20th, 2021, for the first time in our, in our country, county's history. With that, Madam Chair, I'm honored that we have two special guests here to speak. We have Mariana Arredondo, who's the president of Salinas Valley Pride. And she's ready to speak on Zoom. And we also have Juan Rodriguez, our civil rights officer for Monterey County, to say a few words.
Hi, thank you so much for everything that you guys have done for our community. And of course, thank you so much for giving us the support, the visibility, the acceptance for, for all of our community. So on behalf of the, the whole LGBTQ plus community, thank you so much for having, providing a safe space for all of us and for trying, trying to make things easier and better for our community. Because yes, it has been a struggle and thank you so much for giving all that piece of, of history, which is very, very important and we have to honor. So I appreciate you and on behalf of our Salinas Valley Pride organization as well, we thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us, Mariana, once again. And, and we will be at noon on Friday to raise the transgender flag. And I know you'll be there with us and wanted to invite all my colleagues to join us as well. I'll pass the mic to Juan Rodriguez.
Thank you Supervisor. Good morning, members of the public, supervisors and county colleagues. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words and I'm reading because otherwise we'd be here for 10 minutes. Transgender Day of Remembrance, the day we take to think of the transgender and gender nonconforming people that lost their lives for living their true selves. It is a day to think of the people that society tried to erase through hate and violence. To be sure, there has been a lot of progress in Americans' attitudes towards the LGBTQ community over the last years. In the last decade, for example, states that had anti-discrimination employment laws increased from 12 in 2010 to 21 in 2020. In 2010, only 14 states allowed same-sex marriage. Five years later, the United States Supreme Court held it was a law of the land. However, as we have, as we had these advances, there has been backlash. Many states passed religious exemption laws that allowed people, churches and businesses to cite religious beliefs as a reason to not enforce anti-discrimination laws. And the transgender and gender nonconforming community has been a target of this backlash. According to a study by the Williams Institute of UCLA School of Law, transgender people are victimized over four times as often as cisgender people. One in four transgender women who were victimized thought that the incident was a hate crime compared to less than one in 10 cisgender women. Enough concern is that about half of all the violent victimization were not reported to police. In 2020, the Human Rights Campaign tracked the record amount of violence against transgender and gender nonconforming people. Forty-four deaths. 2021 is on track to be a more violent year as the Human Rights Campaign has tracked the deaths of at least 43 transgender or gender nonconforming people so far. As we celebrate the progress we have achieved, we can take this day to remember those that were killed because they were living authentically. We must remember that when progress comes backlash, and it is our collective responsibility to fight for justice and to quote the resolution, actively dedicate ourselves to the principles of human rights, individual freedom, equal protection under the laws of a just and democratic society. In Monterey County, all are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez. And just to end, I want to also recognize our CIO for being very supportive of bringing this resolution forward, Charles McKee. So thank you, Mr. McKee, for your leadership.
Thank you so much Supervisor Alejo. The, the statement in the resolution that really jumps to me and that just seems so, so clear is that all people deserve to live with dignity and respect, free from fear and violence. It's, it's pretty straightforward and I'm so pleased that Monterey County is able to take this, this step to, to visibly show our support of all residents in our community. I also, I just wanted to be clear, we have had a request from the East Garrison Community Services District residents, or the residents of East Garrison and support from the East Garrison Community Services District Chair to have the flag flown at the Lincoln Park on November 20th. So I believe that the resolution does allow for that request to be honored. So we look forward to, to including that as well. And just to clarify, I think we, we mentioned Friday, it's next Friday, November 19th. And we welcome everyone to come out and join us for that. Any other comments from my colleagues?
Two weeks. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I think it's two weeks away that night. Yeah, just so people don't show up too early for that, although we'd love to have them here visiting. But appreciate Supervisor Alejo sponsoring this resolution and, and support from the board. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification. I was getting ahead of myself.
All right, seeing no other hands raised, we will consider our resolutions resolved and recognized. And Adriana, or Mariana, we, we do have a, a signed resolution here that we will make sure that we have available with us on Friday when we do the flag raising that we can present and take some more photos. So I thank you again for all of the work that you do to ensure that our community is represented and safe and have opportunity to live authentically without fear in our community.
Absolutely, and thank you so much for your support.
Yeah, thank you. All right, next up, we are moving on to appointments, item eight. It looks like we only have one item on our appointments list today. And I'd happy to entertain action from the board. Second, we have a motion from Alejo, a second from Adams. Is there any public comment on our appointments today? Being none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Supervisor Alejo?
Hi.
Supervisor Phillips?
Hi.
Supervisor Lopez?
Hi.
Supervisor Adams?
I.
And Chair Supervisor Root Askew.
Hi, thank you. Next up, we have our consent calendar, approval of consent calendar items number 18 through 33. Is there, does anyone on the board have any items you'd like to pull for a comment or question? And just remind everyone, the item number 26 is in receipt of a revised attachment B. I do have comment on items 24, 25, and 28, so I'll go ahead and make those now. Here, 25 is a agreement with First Five Monterey County for Bright Beginnings for the provision of support to Bright Beginnings or Childhood Development Initiative. And I think that we, I'm sorry, 20, I've got my numbers mixed up. 24, 24 is the City of Salinas Project Room Key. And I just want to state that this is a really big deal and significant commitment by the City of Salinas to get our homeless neighbors into shelter. I just want to note that the board report identifies a 200-person waiting list for the new Shares Homeless Shelter. And the reality recognizes the reality that we have almost no vacant beds in our shelter system in Monterey County. I am so proud to be a part of this board that is laser focused on increasing our affordable housing to address our housing crisis, but recognize that and urge our ongoing attention to ensuring that all people have a safe and legal place to sleep at night while we wait for that housing to be built. 25 is the Ag Advisory Annual Report. And just wanted to make sure, thank the Ag Advisory Committee for bringing this annual report back to the Board of Supervisors and just wanted to remind this group as well as all of our boards and commissions that we do have official guidelines or a template that can also be used for annual reports. And I wanted to encourage all of our county commissions and boards to make sure that you get an annual report submitted so that we can see what you're up to and put our stamp of approval on the work that you're doing. And then item number 28 is a report from the Monterey County Workforce Development Board, Small Business Relief Program. It's the kind of information that I would love to have presented more, more publicly. I think there's a lot to celebrate in terms of the way that Monterey County has made very significant financial investments in our small businesses in the community. And would encourage everyone to pop up that report and take a look at all of the local businesses that have received county dollars to help them survive and to begin to recover from COVID. So just a big shout out to, to our, to our Monterey County Workforce Development Board for making those investments in small local businesses. Are there any public comments on the consent agenda this morning? Supervisor Alejo?
I'll, I'll move to approve. I just wanted to just weigh in on the project room key, which is the hotel room program. And it couldn't come at a better time as we're going into the holidays and as the weather, as it rains and that, as it gets colder. This is really going to help, I think, a lot of our most vulnerable residents. So it's a significant amount of money. I think a million 900,000, that's, it's going to be one of our other partnerships with the City of Salinas. So I'm, I'm excited that our staff brought this forward and that we got some state resources to be able to put these rooms to helping protect our, our vulnerable residents. Thank you.
No second, Madam Chair.
Fabulous, so we have a motion from Alejo, a second from Lopez, and we'll take a roll call vote on our consent calendar today. Thank you.
Supervisor Alejo?
Hi.
Supervisor Phillips?
Hi.
Supervisor Lopez?
Hi.
Supervisor Adams?
Hi.
And Chair Supervisor Root Askew.
Hi. All right, we are now on to item number 10, which is general public comment. This is for any public comment on today's agenda that does not appear elsewhere on the board agenda. I'm seeing no one in chambers, is there anyone online for public comment today? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and bring it to our 10:30 AM scheduled matter, item number 11, which is to receive a report from HR, Human Resources Department, on countywide compliance with COVID-19 vaccination mandate. And I'd love to welcome Irma Ramirez-Bow, our Director of Human Resources, and Arianna Hurtado, Human Resources Program Manager.
Good morning, Chair Askew, Irma Ramirez-Bow, HR Director for the county here of Monterey. And good morning to board members, Charles McKee and Les Gerard. We're here this morning to present to you, and Ari is going to share her screen, a presentation to your board. So just to give background, the board had provided direction to the county and had implemented on July 30th, a county vaccination mandate. And today, we're going to be able to share with you where we are with our vaccination mandate. But by way of background, on October 5th, the board extended that deadline for the vaccination status reporting to October 31st. October 31st has now come. And we have received exemptions, which are medical and religious exemptions. We will be reporting on those numbers. And also, we have tables to share with you on the countywide vaccination and the statewide mandate and where we are with our numbers. So with that said, Ari, I'm going to pass it over to you so you can share with the board. And then we will be happy to answer any questions that the board may have of us.
Absolutely. Good morning, board members, Chair Askew. I will begin with going over the numbers for our employees countywide, which fall under the county's vaccination mandate. The table you see up on the screen does outline the first set of departments. In the first column, the second column indicates the number of employees within those departments who have provided proof of being fully vaccinated. The next column reflects those employees who have applied for either religious or medical exemptions and have been approved. And the last column indicates those employees who, now that the October 31st compliance deadline has passed, are now considered to be non-compliant. This number of employees does include those whose exemptions have been denied. So I wanted to make sure we highlight that as some of these employees may be working on submitting the additional information requested and resubmitting their exemptions for consideration. So out of these departments that are up on the screen, we do indicate a total on the bottom there, which shows that 607 employees have provided proof of vaccination. 50 have been approved for exemptions and we have a total of six who are considered to be non-compliant. Moving on to the next set of departments, again, which fall under the county's vaccination mandate, we have the same columns. For these departments, we show that 1,781 employees have provided proof of being fully vaccinated. We have 140 employees who have received approvals for their exemption request and 46 employees who are considered to be non-compliant at the moment. Okay, now we'll move on to explain the data for those employees who fall under the state's vaccination mandate. We have four departments who are covered by this state order, and that's the Health Department and the Tividat Probation and the Sheriff's Office. Three of these four departments have a portion of their employee base, which falls under the state mandate, mandate and a portion which falls under the county's vaccination mandate, which is why you see them listed twice on both set of tables. For these employees or these departments and these employees that fall under the mandate, we do have a confirmation that 2,597 of them have provided proof of being fully vaccinated. 115 have received approvals for their exemption request and 21 are considered to be non-compliant at the moment. With all of the data collected from both those employees that fall under the county's vaccination mandate and those that fall under the state vaccination mandate, we have confirmed that 92% of the countywide workforce has, is now fully vaccinated. For those employees who are considered to be non-compliant, the Human Resources Department will be proceeding with providing specific directives to those employees and providing them five business days to become compliant with the board's vaccination mandate by either submitting a complete request for an authorized exemption, either religious or medical, or providing proof that they've either started their vaccination series or the proof that they have an upcoming appointment. And at which point they would qualify for a temporary medical exemption. So we would like confirmation from the board to authorize the Human Resources Department to proceed with this direction. And with that, Irma, I'll hand it back over to you if you have any additional comments.
No additional comments. And to hear from the board, if you have any questions of us based on the data we've just presented.
Thank you for the presentation. I'll start with my colleague to see if there are any questions. I see no questions. I do have a question. Within the two, there were, the Sheriff's Corner was broken into two different line items. I believe one of them, and I don't, one of them had 15 individuals who were still non-compliant. That was on the state COVID vaccine mandate. And then on the second one, it was 34. Are you able to share what, what bureaus those fall into? I know that we have sort of separations of, you know, corrections, we have patrol.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. For the Sheriff's Office, those employees that fall under the county vaccination mandate are those that are either in the Operations Bureau, which is patrol, or the Administration Bureau. So those are the set of employees that fall under the county vaccination mandate. And we do have 34 in this set of bureaus, which are currently considered to be non-compliant with the county's vaccination mandate. For the state vaccination mandate, this covers and applies to those employees that are assigned to the jail. And at this time, we show 15 employees who are considered to be non-compliant.
Okay, thank you. Let's take this up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this? Okay, thank you. Let's take this up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this report, this item? It's a quiet day today. Right, I'm not seeing anyone in chambers, nor any hands raised online. So bring it back to my colleagues for discussion. And if you could again say that you're looking for direction to continue with notifying employees that they are out of compliance.
That is correct. And so we would give them the five days to be in compliance. And either proceed with, for them to submit their religious exemption or medical exemption, or if they don't comply within the five days, we would A, either put the individuals out on a leave of absence and/or proceed with corrective action.
Okay, great. And that would be different. So we have listed here the Sheriff's Office as well would be included in that action? Or is there a different action that would need to be taken for those individuals?
Well, the Sheriff's Office, and I'm going to look into the CAO to respond, but he is an elected official. And so the HR department does not have the jurisdiction because he's the appointing authority. But I will defer to our CAO, Charles McKee. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Ramirez-Bow and Chair. I think that the board has set the policy and the policy is in place about being vaccinated or have a medical or religious exemption, and that is one that is countywide, that is enforceable by the appointing authority for every department. And if there are questions about that legal status, I would turn that over to County Council.
Thank you, Honorable Chair Members of the Board. The independent elected officials, of which the sheriff is one, is the appointing authority for his department or his office. So Human Resources and the Board of Supervisors does not have disciplinary authority over employees in the Sheriff's Office. The departments that report to the CAO or report directly to you, you do have disciplinary, or the CAO has disciplinary authority over, and then the department such as mine that report directly to the Board of Supervisors. I have disciplinary authority, but report to you all in that regard. So the sheriff is the appointing authority, and it's up to him to determine whether or not to discipline his employees.
All right, any other comments from my colleagues? We've got a hand raised from Lou Supervisor Alejo.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. First of all, I thank our staff for the report and overall really commending all our employees who have been vaccinated. And in our line of work in public service, it's important that we not only protect ourselves, but also our coworkers and especially the public that we are serving. And many of us have roles where we come in contact, frequent contact with the public. And so it becomes even more essential that we take all measures to protect each other at the work site, but also the public coming in to receive those services. I just wanted to take a moment to urge our sheriff to follow the board policy. We didn't make any exceptions here because the policy should be consistent to all and fair to all employees. But we also know that when our public safety law enforcement officers are not vaccinated, they not only could put their own health in danger, but also those of the public as well. And many of them, especially those on patrol, do go out into homes or are the first responders to 911 calls. And it is critical. Not too long ago, we had 17 officers that were out on leave because they were ill. So this is real. This was only a few weeks ago. So it's a real situation there that if we could do something so simple as getting vaccinated to protect ourselves and the public, it is worth doing. So I urge our sheriff to follow the board's policy and enforce the policy just as every other employee has to follow it as well. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Alejo. Any other comments from my colleagues on the board? All right, are you looking for a motion to support the?
Just, I think our report covered if there was any direction that the board wanted to give us, and so that would be.
So I'm not hearing any further direction at this point. I would just add, you know, thank you so much for, this has been a tremendous amount of additional work that has fallen on the shoulders of HR. And I think it is so critically important that people feel safe when they come to work, that they know that their colleagues are less likely to spread this virus when they are providing their public service. And that it's important that the public knows that when they come to the county, they can trust that they are coming into a place that is safe, where we're taking every effort to ensure that masks are worn, that vaccination rates are high, and that testing continues to be made available in the community. So I know that this has been just a huge lift on the part of everyone of our departments, on the part of so many of our employees, on the part of HR, who sort of led the administrative side of tracking all of this. And I would echo Supervisor Alejo's comments, you know, just encouraging, you know, both the sheriff as well as all of our county workers who work in the Sheriff's Office to take seriously and the responsibility that we have as public servants to protect our community, to serve our community, and our collective responsibility to ensure the health of our community, including children who can't yet get vaccinated, the zero to five-year-old little ones who are going to continue waiting for vaccination. Many of the immunocompromised members of our, members of our own families who either can't get vaccinated or who the vaccination isn't as effective for them. We continue to lose lives to this virus, and I think that it is incumbent upon all of us to do our part. So thank you to every single county employee who has taken their personal responsibility for the health and safety of our community seriously. And to those who haven't, I encourage you to continue asking questions of your healthcare provider and recognize that we are all here to look out for one another. It's fundamentally our role as public servants. And we hope that we're able to move forward as a large unit. And, but I think we've made tremendous progress, and I really just want to thank everyone for that. So if there's no additional comments from my colleagues, we will consider the report received with no further direction. And thank you again for your work.
Thank you so much for your comments, Chair Askew.
Uh huh. With that, we are done with our morning agenda, and we are not recessing to closed session. We are recessing to lunch. Supervisor Alejo, did you have any final comments?
I just wanted to let the public know I won't be on the afternoon session because I am officiating my sister's wedding this afternoon. So congratulations to my sister Ruth and her soon-to-be husband Bjorn Danov.
Congratulations. Board of Supervisors.
Thank you.
We will, we won't make any huge decisions in your absence, all right? All right, with that, we will adjourn our recess to lunch, and we'll reconvene back here at 1:30 to continue on with our agenda. Thank you.
All right, everybody, welcome back. It is 1:33 and we are going to call to order the Board of Supervisors of the Monterey County Water Resources Agency with a roll call from the clerk, please. Okay, we're going to do that one later. We are going to skip ahead on the agenda. Okay, we're going to reconvene the Monterey County Board of Supervisors with a roll call from the clerk, please.
Good afternoon. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with the exception of Supervisor Alejo. And Supervisor Phillips and Lopez are appearing via video conference. And Supervisor Truaskew and Adams are appearing in person.
Thank you. Well, let's see here. Item number 12 is to conduct a public hearing and receive public comment to satisfy the provisions of the Streets and Highways Code, Section 100.22, regarding a freeway agreement with Caltrans. And it looks like we've got Randy Ishi here and Chad Aliano with Public Works to present.
Thank you, Chair and members of the board. I appreciate the introduction. I'm Randy Ishi from the Department of Public Works, Facilities and Parks for Monterey County. And also on the line today are representatives from Caltrans. In the interest of time, staff has a brief oral presentation to summarize the contents of the board report, as well as the contents and reason for the public hearing. As with other Caltrans and county projects of the past, there are many opportunities to bring forward information and agreements to the board, all as part of the Caltrans process. The step before you today is the freeway agreement, which is one of the next set of agreements that will be brought to the board, with the next ones including the right-of-way agreement, and then maintenance agreements, cooperative agreements, and relinquishment agreements as the life of the project progresses. We're still in the initial steps of the project. And this freeway agreement is the next step to be approved so that Caltrans can continue forward on the C-156 Castle Boulevard interchange project. This step is required under Article III of the California Streets and Highways Code under the Department of Transportation, AKA Caltrans. So upon entering into a freeway agreement, it stipulates an understanding of how the progress of the project will progress during its construction phase, and that the county will work with Caltrans on things like coordination, opening of roads, temporary road closures, and things of that nature, as summarized in the freeway agreement and in the board report. So with that, staff recommends doing items A through C, which is conducting a public hearing and receiving public comment, as well as approving the freeway agreement itself and authorizing that it be signed, executed, and submitted to the county reporter for filing. That concludes staff's presentation. Again, we have representatives from Caltrans on the line in the form of Mike Liu, the project manager. And we open it up to the Board of Supervisors, and thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much, Randy. We will open this up to public comment at this point for anyone who would like to weigh in in this public hearing. If you're with us on Zoom, please go ahead and raise your hand so that I can call on you. If you're calling in, I believe you need to press star nine so that we can see your hand raised. We don't have anyone joining us in chambers today. I do see one hand raised, phone number ending in 902. Thank you for joining us. And then you'll need to press star six to unmute, perfect.
And this is the public hearing for the Highway 156, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I've been following this, my name is Nina Beatty. I've been following this proposal for a number of years, seeing that the salamanders that live in the adjoining wetlands, there's now permission to eliminate them, basically. I have driven that road many, many, many times. The woodlands that are adjacent to there, the oak woodlands and the eucalyptus woodlands from the map, it looks like all of that's going away. And I, the traffic has been a problem for years. I see the traffic problem diminishing, if anything, in the future. The environmental damage from this project, I don't know what other alternatives were explored, but I completely oppose the environmental damage that's going to happen from this freeway zooming through this area. We continue to pave and pave and pave. And we had, I think, far more traffic into this area. Gas prices go up and will continue to go up, there will be less traffic and less need for such a large road. I just, we continue to, the environment continues to take hits. The critters, the trees, it continues to part company and be eliminated in favor of automobiles. And I can't support anything that does that. The environment continues to be damaged, and I don't see any action to ameliorate that. So once trees are built, they're done.
Nina, we're out of time. I appreciate you joining us today. Is there any other public comment for this public hearing? I'm seeing no further hands raised, so we will close public comments and bring it back to the board for any questions, comments, or action. Supervisor Phillips.
Now, this is a critical project, and we've got to keep it moving forward. And it was the number one thing that we, when we passed Measure X, this is one of the things to get started on it. And as I mentioned before, much of this road hasn't been changed or improved when I was driving, when I was in the Army here in 1965. So clearly, this is a major, so with the appropriate time, I moved to approve the project. Thank you.
I'll be your second, John.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a motion from Phillips, a second from Lopez. Any additional comments from the board? All right, we'll take a roll call vote, thank you. Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez? Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root Askew. Aye. All right, the motion carries. Thank you for the work on this, Mr. Ishi. We appreciate, hopefully, you guys are doing a lot. You've got a lot of projects and programs that you're pushing through. So thank you for bringing this to us, and we'll look forward to seeing what happens next. And to the folks from Caltrans, thank you also for being available in case any comments or questions came up. All right, next up, we have item number 14, which is to consider, which is a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution for a lot line adjustment that is categorically exempt as a minor alteration in land use limitations per Section 15305A of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. And there are no exceptions pursuant to sequel guideline, Section 15300.2. I believe we have Craig Spencer here with the planning to make a brief presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Craig Spencer with Housing and Community Development. Let me share my screen here. Are you seeing my screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This project is a lot line adjustment. It's located at 301 the Poncet Road in Marina, which is north of the city of Marina in the Greater Monterey Peninsula Area Plan. It is a lot line adjustment for adjustment of boundaries between four contiguous lots that are part of a Williamson Act contract. And the properties are zoned farmland, 40 acre minimums, and permanent grazing, 40 acre minimums. Here are some maps of the proposed lot line adjustment. They are overlaying the actual conditions on the ground. And on the left are the existing lot lines of the four parcels being adjusted. On the right are the proposed lot lines. And if you take some time to study them, essentially what's happening here is the boundaries are being adjusted to reflect the actual conditions on the ground, which include mostly agricultural and row crop production with the center of the lot being more topographical features and improvements. And one smaller lot with some residential and agricultural related improvements. So staff reviewed the lot line adjustment, found it consistent with the applicable criteria, and is recommending that the Board of Supervisors find the lot line adjustment categorically exempt, approve the lot line adjustment, and inclusive of amending the Williamson Act contracts. There's a lot of actions here, but I won't repeat them all. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So we will be circling right back to that. But I do, I believe, do we have anyone from Sunset Farms who would like to speak to this item? Thank you for joining us today.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay? My name is Ryan Jefferson. Oh, sorry. My name's Ryan Jefferson. I'm with the Jefferson family who owns that property. We're partnered with Sunset Farms on this. And this is, the intention here is to align existing production along with the property boundaries so it's more in keeping with operations that are on the ground today. No intention of altering any kind of Williamson Act or anything like that. We're just trying to align things and make it more in line with operations.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you.
As part of the public hearing, let's take this out to public comment to see if there's any public comments. Anyone who's with us online, please raise your hand so that I can call on you. If you're on a phone, you'll need to press star nine. I'm seeing no public comment. So we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion and action. Any of my colleagues have comments, questions?
Happy to move approval of staff recommendation, Madam Chair.
Second.
Great, we have a motion from Lopez, a second from Adams, I believe, and we'll take a roll call vote, thank you. Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root Askew. Aye. And thank you for joining us today. All right, we are going to circle back to item number 13, and my apologies, I got ahead of myself. Item number 13 is to introduce wave reading and consider an ordinance to add Chapter 16.63 to the Monterey County Code to establish regulations for water efficient and energy efficient landscaping in unincorporated Monterey County. And I'd like to welcome Jamie Guthrie to brief us with a presentation. Do we have Jamie online here? Okay, we're bringing you over, Jamie, hang tight.
And you're a co-host.
Oh, good, okay. Over.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will begin sharing my screen here. Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Jamie Scott Guthrie, project planner for REF 21007, the landscape ordinance, proposed as Monterey County Code, Chapter 16.63. State law requires the county to implement the state's model water efficient landscape ordinance, also known as the MUILO for residential or non-residential products that require a permit, plan check, or design review. Or the county may adopt and implement a water efficient landscape ordinance if the Board of Supervisors finds based on evidence in the record that it is at least as effective as conserving water as the state's MUILO. Absent a local landscape ordinance, the county has been implementing the state MUILO since 2010. The Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors considered prior drafts of the proposed landscape, local landscape ordinance, which had consisted of two separate ordinances for the coastal zone and non-coastal areas. Planning Commission recommended adoption of the two ordinances on March 25, 2015. The Board of Supervisors considered versions of the two draft landscape ordinances on March 22 and April 19, 2016, and October 23, 2018. Per board directions, staff met with stakeholders and made clarifications to the extent appropriate. The Monterey Peninsula Water Management District Board adopted a consolidated version of this landscape ordinance in September 2016, being implemented as Rule 142.1. A key concern of the public was that agricultural cultivation would be required to comply with the ordinance. This ordinance clarifies the intent is to govern those types of landscapes that are ornamental in nature and typically found in non-agricultural settings. The ordinance before you today is a consolidation of the two ordinances previously reviewed by the Commission and the Board of Supervisors. It incorporates California legislation SB 1383 with updates to the MUILO. The County Administrative Office is aiming to adopt regulations to implement SB 1383 by January 1, 2022. And the landscape ordinance implements the MUILO aspect of SB 1383. If adopted, Chapter 16.63 would become effective on the 31st day following its adoption. The landscape ordinance implements policies in the 2010 Monterey County General Plan, which are applicable in the non-coastal areas of the county. Adoption of this ordinance does not require an amendment to the local coastal program or certification by the California Coastal Commission. Correspondence from the California Coastal Commission states that, quote, "existing regulations of the LCP appear to adequately cover the issue of water conservation and water efficiency in landscaping without the need to add any references to this new ordinance," unquote. Chapter 16.63 is consistent with several ordinances in the Monterey County Code. Further, the landscape ordinance implements the adopted 2019 California Green Building Standards Code, known as CALGREEN, in Chapter 16.63. known as CALGREEN, in chapter eighteen point one one of the Monterey County Code with the water and energy conservation measures contained in chapter one six point six three. Adoption of the landscape ordinance satisfies completion of a task in the Long Range Planning Work Program. Benefits to the applicants for adopting the landscape ordinance include the distinction between major and minor landscapes. Up to now, the county has placed the same requirements for all landscape projects associated with a discretionary permit, plan check, or design review. Chapter one six point six three would now require for minor landscape an agreement verified by the applicant and/or owner to comply with landscaping requirements in a checklist approach. While a major landscape would require certification by a licensed landscape architect or licensed landscape contractor for compliance, including a more rigorous requirement for design, construction, documents, and post-construction documents, specifically for planting, irrigation, soils, and grading. The minor-major distinction correlates to the MUILO, the state MUILO pathways for compliance as prescriptive and performance, respectively. A landscape manual would be adopted at a later date by resolution as authorized by the landscape ordinance. The landscape manual would work in conjunction with the ordinance to explain the regulations and the permit process for landscape projects and would contain technical information on planting and irrigation. The manual would also contain the necessary forms for implementation of the ordinance. Staff anticipates presenting the manual to the Board of Supervisors for consideration in the early part of 2022. As mentioned previously, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the inland and coastal versions of the landscape ordinance in 2015. Now, as consolidated, staff recommends the Board of Supervisors find adoption of the ordinance is categorically exempt per sections one five three oh seven and one five three oh eight of the SEQUA guidelines as an action taken by the county as authorized by state law to assure the maintenance, restoration, or enhancement of natural resources and the environment. And there are no exceptions to the exemptions per section one five three hundred point two of the SEQUA guidelines. Adopt the landscape ordinance to add chapter one six point six three to the Monterey County Code. And set September seventh, 2021, at ten thirty AM is the date and time to adopt the landscape ordinance. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Guthrie, for the presentation. Are there any questions from the board? Whereas I'll take it out to public comment. We have one Supervisor Phillips.
I'll wait to public comment.
Okay, great. Any public comment on this item? All right, I'm not seeing any hands raised. Anyone with us on Zoom who would like to make public comment on this item? Please raise your hand so that I can call on you. Not seeing any hands raised, so we'll bring it back to you Supervisor Phillips.
Thank you. I just question, this is the first time that we've seen this since 2018. Is that correct?
Correct, sir.
Frankly, trying to get through this and understand it is with kind of on the short notice has been difficult for if you're not in this business, it's hard to understand all the ramifications. But explain to me how this dovetails with the landscape manual. That's not going to be adopted until some later time, 2022?
Correct. Through the chair, it will be dovetailing with the ordinance as far as providing guidance in, well, for the water efficiency aspect, there are calculations that are required by the state. And the manual would include those calculations and and other sort of technical help.
All right. Next question is, explain to me the relation between this ordinance and the projects that are in the CALAM system and then North County. Does that kick us into eighteen, another code section that's not covered by this?
Through the chair, I don't believe so.
All right. The project in CALAM systems are, are they already required to be low water use landscaped in those two sections?
Through the chair, the county has been consistently abiding by the state's requirements. So that has been what has been happening throughout the county.
All right, well. And I don't, like I said, I think I have to consult with some people that are in this business to realize the ramifications. But I'm looking at this and one sixteen sixty three oh six oh and one hundred talk about soil sampling, certified laboratory testing. Evaluation is so to include soil texture, filtration rate, pH, total soluble salts, sodium, soil sample rate of fifteen percent. It, what I don't want to see is us having an ordinance that's so complex and convoluted that people say, well, well, I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna bother with it. I'm just gonna concrete everything over and that's my concern. So I'm probably gonna ask Madam Chair to put this over a couple of weeks. So I can consult with some people in the business to point out any issues that they see that may cause a problem. The other thing I did see was it said requiring all landscapes will shall be reasonably maintained for the life of the project. And it says shall, you're a little worried about that. If we're having a drought and I'm not watering my lawn, is that going to be a thing where the neighbor comes in and yells and screams and goes to the county and says, well, they're not maintaining the water system? So I just have some concerns until I have had a more enlightened look into all the language in this modification. Thank you.
All right. I think our County Council, Lestard, has a comment, and then we've got a whole handful of staff hands raised. So we'll, maybe we've got some more information for you Supervisor Phillips.
Thank you, Honorable Chair members of the Board, Supervisors. This is merely introduction. It is not adoption. Adoption would be set for December seventh. So if you wanted to proceed with just introduction, you could take the time the next month Supervisor Phillips, consult with the people you need to consult with, and then come back and have the discussion on the substance of the ordinance on the seventh. Either that, or you could move to continue introduction to some later date.
All right, thank you.
We've got Wendy Stirling with your hand raised, and then Eric Lundquist.
Thank you. In addition to the comments made by County Council Gerard, that he would also address to the Supervisor Phillips' questions. With regard to the landscape manual, that is to implement the ordinance, but so that basically the ordinance authorizes the board to adopt a manual by resolution, but you wouldn't be required to do so. It would be something you could choose to do. But the ordinance is freestanding, if you will. And so if you choose, staff is still working on the manual. They bring it back to you at a future meeting, and then you could decide whether or not to adopt it. That's more by nature, you know, it's to provide guidance, to provide some of the forms and that kind of thing. So that wouldn't, you know, by adopting the ordinance, you're not blocking yourself into adopting the manual. The other thing is with regard to your question about North County, the ordinance actually does have a provision about that section, which is eighteen point four four of the Monterey County Code. And it says, landscape projects that are within the CALAM Water Company Service Area as defined in chapter eighteen point four four are subject to eighteen point four four. And chapter sixteen point six three is intended to work in conjunction with that chapter. But if there were any inconsistency, then chapter sixteen point six three shall prevail. So it, the ordinance does speak to that as well as to another section entitled eighteen, chapter eighteen point five oh. Because we recognize that the county was way ahead of the state in terms of requiring conservation. But as Jamie said, with the state regulations, the county is required to apply the model, state's model ordinance, unless the county adopts a local ordinance that is at least as effective. And so that, so since 2015, the county's been applying the state model. And so I think this is the effort to try to get a local ordinance.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Stirling. And just Supervisor Lopez, we'll circle back to you, but I did want to give Eric Lundquist a chance to answer any additional questions from Supervisor Phillips first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was actually gonna indicate, as Wendy indicated, the state's model landscape ordinance would apply in the absence of a locally adopted ordinance, which she stated. Thank you.
Okay, fabulous. Thank you. And Supervisor Lopez?
Yeah, thank you. I share the same concerns as Supervisor Phillips. You know, when I step back and look at this, I try to put up, put on the lens of somebody coming to our planning department while they're building their own home, not necessarily hiring a professional landscaper. How simple is this process for that person to feel like I can accomplish this? And reading some of these things, it really put me kind of back on my heels thinking, I would be extremely confused and immediately feel the need to go hire somebody for thousands of more dollars, right? And so I want to make sure that as we move forward through this, we keep that lens on this, making sure that folks understand that we're serving still the public and that whatever we put forward is consumable. Because as I looked at this, I had a lot of questions, and I too need a little more time to dig into it, to dig it to certain people, to make sure that what we're doing here is going to work with all the landscaping companies in South County. But I also worry about that person who might come in down the road later and say, well, now I'm hitting all these walls. What are these walls from? And having to step back and explain. So, you know, I just, I want to make sure that as we have small businesses that grow in the unincorporated area in South County, they're not going to run into some of these, you know, development requirements down the road and feel like I don't fully understand what I'm up against. And I feel the need to go spend a lot more money to get to the bottom of it. So I just want, I want everyone to, my request is that we carry that lens as we move through this process. Thank you.
Eric Lundquist, are you able to respond to that?
Sure. Supervisor Lopez and Supervisor Phillips, I agree with you. The ordinance is extremely complicated. You have to be a mathematician to actually come to the conclusion of what you are required to produce. In simple context, though, the key point is that you are allotted a certain amount of water for your landscape. And then you perform a calculation on their proposed in order to determine the estimated water needed to support that landscape. If the estimated water is under that allowance, then you can proceed. If it's above, then you need to redesign the landscaping in order to achieve that balance. Along with that, though, comes the need to segregate planting types into various water usage from high to low in order to maintain that water conservation policy. There are then some requirements for slopes and grades, all pointed at the need to reduce the amount of water used for landscaping. We are here to help in Housing and Community Development to guide folks through that process. As Assistant County Council indicated, this ordinance by default is in effect. And so we are currently helping those developers circumnavigate those provisions. And we have been successful at doing that, although it is another step in the process. So I'm here to answer any questions in this meeting or separately. If you'd like to meet with you and your constituents, we're here to help. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't know, Jamie or Eric, who the right person for this question is. But is there a way to, is this time sensitive, or could we have this come back in two weeks so that we give our supervisors a chance to get some of their additional questions answered? Jamie, I'll throw this at you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think County Council has the most appropriate answer.
Perfect. We'll pass it over to Wendy then, or to Les. I've got Les grabbing the microphone.
Chair, I think there could be a continuance of the introduction to, say, November sixteenth, which is the next meeting.
Okay.
And then at that time, you would introduce and then set the time for the adoption, which, based on the, you know, probably could happen still in December.
Okay, then I think, I think that maybe we best allow some additional time for the rest of the Supervisors to have, be able to get their questions answered and consult with their constituents. And is our motion to table this until the sixteenth?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Supervisor Phillips, a second from Lopez to table this item and have it return on November sixteenth. We'll take a roll call vote. Thank you.
Supervisor Phillips?
Hi.
Supervisor Lopez?
Hi.
Supervisor Adams?
Hi.
And Chair Supervisor Root ask you.
Hi. Thank you, Jamie and Erica, for being here with us today. And we'll look forward to seeing you again in a couple of weeks. Okay, that was item thirteen. We already completed item fourteen. We're gonna bump ahead to other board matters. Item fifteen is our CAO comments and new referrals.
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Chair. No comments this week. We do have two new referrals. One referral is to request that we create a management position to coordinate and collaborate and direct all of our homelessness activities and try to get a better handle on the disparate ways that we address homelessness here in Monterey County. And to see if we can have a more coordinated approach. And so we're happy to look into a way to create a management position to address homelessness. That wouldn't be, we wouldn't be taking away from others. We're just trying to figure out the best way, I think, through this referral to, to address some of the, try to coordinate better the homelessness services that we're trying to provide here in Monterey County, including the housing parts of it. In addition, sorry, that referral comes from Supervisor Aleo. In addition, another Supervisor Aleo has also submitted a referral to request that the full board have a letter, a letter to the Monterey County Civil Grand Jury to look into the activities of the Housing Authority of the County of Monterey. And I know that the supervisor previously submitted his own letter to the grand jury. And we'd be happy to come back with a way to have the Board of Supervisors make that request as a whole to the, to the grand jury. And we're asking our Housing Community Development Director, Eric Lundquist, to take the lead on putting forward, putting together that letter.
Looks like Les has his hand on the microphone.
No, Chair, I was just going to point out that on the latter referral time is sort of of the essence because the Civil Grand Jury is deciding as we speak what to investigate and starting their investigation. So if we need to make the request timely, if you want the Civil Grand Jury to be able to investigate appropriately.
Yeah, so I think that was the question that I had, Charles, and unfortunately Supervisor Aleo isn't with us this afternoon. But I want to thank him for making that particular referral. We've been sort of digging into some issues there in a parallel. And I, if there is a timeline, are we able to give direction today to say that we give our approval to have that request come on behalf of the full board?
You know, I'll defer to council, but I think it's on the agenda, so I think you probably could. And you would just have to defer to the wisdom of staff in creating that letter and sending it in on behalf of the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, I would like to see that happen. Is that something that we can give action, direction for today?
Yes, I believe so.
All right.
Great. So if we can, if we can get a motion to that effect, I think that would be helpful.
Yep, perfect. Any other comments on this board referrals?
No, I totally agree. I'd make the motion.
Second. All right, we've got a motion from Supervisor Phillips with a dueling second. I'll throw it at you Supervisor Lopez to submit on behalf of the entire board a letter to the Civil Grand Jury requesting their investigation into the Housing Authority along the lines of the letter that Supervisor Aleo had drafted in 2019 and submitted, but working with county staff to finalize it for current concerns that have been raised.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I know Mr. Lundquist is on. I don't know if he has any comments. Otherwise, we can. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I know Mr. Lundquist is on. I don't know if he has any comments. Otherwise, we can just move forward.
I was gonna ask the nature of the letter, but I think Chair Askew just indicated it. So I, I understand and will be drafting that for signature. Thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment on that motion?
You know, and that's a, that's a good, sorry, he made a comment at the end there, Mr. Lundquist, for signature. I guess I, I would suggest that the, that the Chair of the Board be authorized to sign that letter.
Sure. Uh, is there any public comment on this motion? And once again, we're at item number fifteen, C A O Officer, uh, Comments and Referrals, and we're speaking directly to a motion, uh, to submit a letter uh, to the Civil Grand Jury requesting, um, that they consider, uh, the Housing Authority from Monterey County, um, as, uh, as a topic of focus. I'm seeing no hands raised, so I'll close public comment and we'll bring it back for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Phillips?
Hi.
Supervisor Lopez?
Hi.
Supervisor Adams?
Hi.
And Chair Supervisor Root Askew.
Hi. Thank you. I'm sure Supervisor Alejo will be pleased to hear this report back. Um, and the, uh, next item, uh, on our agenda is item number sixteen. Uh, to receive a preliminary analysis report in response to board referral twenty twenty-one dot eighteen, um, which is in regards to hosting a joint special meeting with the Monterey County Water Resources Agency Board of Directors and other agencies um, to discuss, uh, to to provide a comprehensive overview of regional projects under consideration um, through the groundwater sustainability, um, process.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you, Honorable Chair members of the board. Uh, a clarification, this item also appears on a Water Resources Agency, uh, agenda. And upon reflection and and conversation with the C A O, because this is a county referral, Water Resources Agency staff will be providing the preliminary report, but there's no need to have a, have you adjourn and convene the Water Resources Agency and just hear the same thing. So, um, my recommendation is that you not convene the Water Resources Agency. After we're done here, you just get the response from Water Resources Agency staff as appropriate.
Works for me. All right. So we'll welcome Brian Bucci for, uh, and Elizabeth Kraft to, uh, make a brief presentation.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Um, Chair Root Askew, Elizabeth Kraft, Deputy General Manager, Water Resources Agency. Um, we received the referral and we've had a lot of conversations, uh, with the Salinas Valley Sustainable Groundwater G S A, um, about this. We all feel it's important that we have this kind of meeting and to learn about all the, um, different projects and proposals that are out there surrounding, uh, water projects. With the difficulties of putting together a, a meeting of so many organizations with quorums. We thought it was better to have just a special workshop of either the Board of Supervisors of Monterey County or the Board of Supervisors and the Board of Supervisors of the Water Resources Agency to hear presentations from various invited guests and the G S A and the Water Resources Agency. So that was, and we would do that sometime early next year. So that was our, um, initial response and review of this referral. So if you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Kraft. Um, I'll, uh, see first of all, if Supervisor Adams has any, um, comments or questions.
Yes, first, just thank you so much, um, Elizabeth, for bringing the preliminary response back, um, to the, uh, to this referral. Um, and for, also appreciate the work that I know that Donna Meyer and, um, Emily Gardner from Salinas Valley Basin G S A had conversations with you about it as well. I could go into lots and lots of questions and lots of comments about why I think this is the best thing since sliced bread. But I have a feeling that my colleagues probably agree with me, and it would just be, uh, spending time that I believe I should keep for when we have the actual workshop itself. So, um, I think at this point, I'll go ahead and see if there's any public discussion about it. And if so, I'll have additional comments to make at that point.
Great. And thank you for making this referral, Supervisor Adams. I do think it is important. Um, uh, comments from, uh, the Board of Supervisors. Otherwise, we'll take it out to public comment. And I see that we have, uh, Donna Myers with us. Uh, thank you for joining us, Donna. We will pass the microphone over to you for your thoughts.
Thank you, Chair Askew and members of the board. Uh, my name is Donna Myers. I'm the General Manager of the Salinas Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And I'm here to support the referral. Uh, we have been meeting, uh, quite a few times with, uh, both county staff and, um, staff from the, of the, of the Water Resources Agency. Um, as a new program, uh, really, uh, basically initiated out of the state of California, it's really important for, um, your board and and our community to understand what the Sustainable Groundwater Act will mean. And, um, this, uh, study session or joint, joint meeting, um, will be very, a very helpful place for us to sort of, you know, convey the picture of where things are and how the Groundwater Sustainability Act fits into the water resources questions um, around, facing Monterey County into the future. So we are, um, very pleased to participate and, um, will assist in the planning as needed. And, uh, we, again, thank, um, your board for, uh, hopefully your approval of this referral this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us today, Ms. Myers. Um, and next up, we have Marley, followed by Thomas, for public comment.
Yes, this is Marley Milton, and I would also like to voice my support for, uh, getting the big picture on water needs throughout our county and, uh, acquainting everyone with each other's waters needs. Uh, I think it will be very helpful for all of us and the Board of Supervisors to get a big picture. And, uh, even if we make individuals smaller steps on our own, it'll be nice to be working together. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments today, Marley. Next up, we have Thomas, followed by Susan. Thomas, we're not hearing you. There we go.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Tom Versick speaking. Thank you, um, Chair Root Askew. Uh, I have two somewhat contradictory approaches. And I'm neutral about the, um, referral itself. I have clients, I've had longstanding clients in the southern part of the county. It is important, depending on the scope of the workshop, to also look at what, um, about the reservoir operations, which is certainly within the purview of the M C W R A. I just noticed that the brief memos are appropriately narrow about groundwater, but there is correlation in some respects with the ground and the surface water. The other comment, which is slightly contradictory, is that Sigma has a particular scope. That's a Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. So what the G S A is doing is rather compatible and similar to what, say, the Monterey County Water Resources Agency is doing. But they really do have a different purpose and a different set of standards. So it's important to keep those distinctions in mind and which is presumably something that will come up. So again, uh, thank you for the time and, uh, the direction, um, perhaps that you will provide is all.
Thank you, Thomas, for your comments. Um, next up, we have Susan.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. Um, I support this referral strongly.
Oh, I'm sorry, Susan, we lost your audio. Can we try you one more time?
Hello, can you hear me now?
There we go. Let's start over again. Thank you.
You were muted on me, sorry. Um, anyway, I support this strongly, this referral, and given the complexities of the water issues in our region, I hope you'll do it sooner than later. Um, I'm sure there have been informal contacts amongst all of these players. But a more formal networking can, um, produce more political will for change. And I hope that opening communication can bring forward more possibilities for solutions that can both help individual areas and the region as a whole. So I do support this very much, and I hope that, um, it is fruitful. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us today, Susan. Um, next up, we have John.
Hi, thank you. This is John Farrell on behalf of Land Watch. Uh, we're very encouraged that the agencies responsible for choosing the projects and management actions are gonna be working together. This is really critical. Uh, we've circulated a draft report identifying some key issues that have to be resolved. And we hope the agencies will address these issues before committing to particular projects and that, um, there could be some progress on these issues before, um, the meeting. Uh, information is required to inform choices. Uh, first, agencies need to determine, uh, willingness to pay. We need econometric studies to find out whether the proposed projects are really feasible economically. A lot of them are very expensive. Um, second, the agencies should determine the water rights uh, and the water needs, uh, to get into Sigma compliance. Uh, urban suppliers shouldn't, uh, have to pay more uh, for acre foot than ag suppliers to replace water that they have rights to. Third, uh, agencies need to address the equity issues between the different users and different sub-basins. There's obviously huge differences in opinion about allocation of costs and benefits between, uh, the sub-basins. Uh, fourth, the agencies need to, uh, assess pumping allocations and controls as an alternative to infrastructure projects. And shouldn't just assume that we need to build a project. It may be cheaper to manage pumping. Um, and finally, uh, with all this information, the agencies should come up with a suite of projects and actions that are the least cost, feasible, equitable, and timely. Thanks.
Thank you for joining us today and thank you for your comments, John. I believe you also submitted that in writing, if I'm correct. Um, any other public comment on this item today? Let's we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Um, I did have one question. Uh, let's see here. And Elizabeth, I heard the concern about having, um, there be multiple, um, bringing, bringing together multiple Brown Act jurisdictions. Um, but I do think that that's part of the benefit of the referral as it was made. Um, I'll defer to the, the, the referral maker to, um, to work with you to find the right way to address that. But, um, we do have many organizations who have a lot at stake here. And we don't often have opportunities to be in the same place, hearing the same information and, uh, engaging in, uh, similar, um, the same conversation. And I think that there could be significant benefit to, to finding the way to, to do that. I, um, I think we have a similar, similar need to, to, to figure out how to have those kinds of regional workshops, um, for conversation around, uh, water as well as a number of other, uh, topics, including homelessness and housing. So if there's a way to, to work this, um, and come, come to some, uh, conclusion about how to make that work, I think it would benefit us from many other areas as well. Um, but I will refer back to the, um, the referral maker to work with you to find the right strategy moving forward. I don't see any other hands raised, so I'll pass it back to you Supervisor Adams.
Thanks very much. And actually, we've been working with County Council on, um, his approach on what we can do to be able to steer clear of, uh, getting anybody tripped up over the Brown Act on how we would be able to convene this, uh, this whole group. And I agree, I think it's important to get as many parties to the table, but not everyone who would be participating would be constrained by the Brown Act. It's just some of the groups that would be. And as I said, we've been working with County Council to ensure that we would be able to do that without, um, uh, tripping anybody up. Obviously, that's, it's key. Um, but I'm happy to, that I've heard from a number of people today. Um, I think clearly this is the most important and obviously the most controversial issue that we've got. And we need to address it. And the only way we're gonna be able to do it is by tackling it together. And I firmly believe that this is step one toward coming to some, some sort of solutions that will be able to help us solve this problem that we've got. There's a sense of urgency that I feel because looking at a, a regional water solution, we've got residents in Marina, Castroville, Salinas, and in my district, in Toro Park, Las Palmas, in the Caradatiera area, that are really, um, facing some very serious limitations on the, uh, on the water that they have. So I think pulling together, um, concurrently, working toward the, the, uh, program that we've got, you know, in mind, this concept of the, of the water, uh, meeting, but not to stop working on other projects that are going on at this point, so that we, um, continue to focus on as many things as we can, just to move us forward. So, um, uh, with that, I think we've got what we need for this, uh, I believe we have what we need. I hope so. At any rate, um, more questions perhaps from the other board members. But I do have a lot of other information, but I think I will be smarter to share that with the staff who will be working on this process and project as we, um, start to look forward to having a presentation in, um, in January. I think that would be the, the best time for us. I know there is, there is a sense of, of urgency and rightly so. So my hope is that we'll be able to have this, convene this meeting in January after the first of the year.
Great, thank you so much. Um, and this is just to receive a report at this point. I didn't hear any specific additional direction that was given. So we will receive the report and, um, move on to board comments. Board comments. We'll start with you, Mary.
Um, thank you. The quarterly Big Sur Multi-Agency Advisory Committee meeting is coming up next week on Friday, November twelfth at ten o'clock. It sadly, it's going to be a virtual meeting. We were really hoping to be able to do it in person, but, um, at this point, we're going to continue virtually. If anyone would like to attend, please contact my office and we can give you the information that you'll need to be able to do that. And then following the, um, Disaster Council's meeting last week where they received a draft evacuation plan, I encourage the residents in my district and, and others as well, who have been concerned about evacuations of their neighborhoods in a fire or other emergency, to review and comment on this document. It can be found on the Office of Emergency Services webpage. And you can submit document, you can submit your comments on the plan on that webpage as well. So again, that's the, um, draft evacuation plan. I think it could be helpful to folks. Also, my office is going to be hosting a community meeting on the Corral de Tierra management area of Monterey Sub Basin on, uh, the evening of November, uh, seventeenth. The meeting will include an overview on the ground, of the groundwater sustainability plan. And again, please contact my office if you want details on, um, how to participate in that meeting. And then finally, um, given that we might be meeting next week, I just want to thank all of our veterans for their service. It was wonderful to have the presentation that we did earlier today, um, to, uh, honor the, uh, work that people are doing for the military and veterans here. And I'm delighted to be able to attend the annual Veterans of the Year Dinner this coming weekend. It's always a joyful occasion with a lot of, uh, people that just pull at your heartstrings from the work that they've done and continue to do in the life of service. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Supervisor. Um, I'll throw my comments in next. Uh, I wanted to thank everyone, um, who joined us for our East Garrison, uh, Town Hall uh, meeting with development updates. We had a hundred and thirty people on our Zoom call, um, last Thursday to learn about the ongoing development responsibilities and the timelines for the full build out, build out, um, of East Garrison. Um, we had a number of different, uh, county staff, uh, members, uh, who were, uh, present with us, who helped us organize the presentation. Um, we weren't able to go into as much detail as I know many of, um, our residents would like on each of the specific items. So we will be having some follow-up, uh, conversations. But, um, it was a, it was a great opportunity for people to get sort of a just a very general overview of where we're at, uh, with that, um, with that community development. Uh, we do have a copy of the video posted, um, on, on Facebook as well as on my website. Uh, so anyone who's interested in, uh, taking a closer look at that, um, please, uh, please check it out. Um, I will also be hosting another virtual, um, uh, uh, meeting on Wednesday. Uh, this coming Wednesday, we'll be, uh, chatting, um, about general District Four issues, um, including, uh, some of the ways in which the redistricting process may, um, adjust lines within the current District Four boundaries. And we want to, um, invite anyone who's interested in chatting with, uh, myself and my team to hop online and join us. That'll be at five thirty on Wednesday on Zoom. We've got all the information online. And then I also, um, will be joining you, uh, Mary, um, at the Military and Veterans Affairs, um, Advisory, uh, Commission, uh, Veteran of the Year Ceremony this Saturday. So I look forward to seeing everyone. Um, look forward to seeing everyone. All right, Supervisor Lopez, any, uh, board comments today?
For risk of violating Brown Act, I too will be at the Veterans of the Year Dinner. So I look forward to seeing everybody there. I will keep my distance uh, so that we don't violate the Brown Act. But also, I'll be at the Veterans Day Parade, spending time thanking veterans for, uh, their commitment to our nation. And so wanted to say Happy Veterans Day to every veteran out there. Um, I, I had the opportunity to get down to Naleo last week in Manhattan Beach and make a presentation, uh, to elected officials from fourteen of our fifty different states about some of the things we were able to accomplish here in Monterey County during the pandemic, even though we're not through it. Uh, we talked about some of the challenges we faced, and, uh, I, I was just happy to be able to be in that forum to share some of that experience with folks from other areas. It was a great forum. They included L A's Mayor Eric Garcetti as well as some, uh, other, uh, statewide elected officials from California. So just wanted to share with everybody that that was, it felt good to hear folks congratulate Monterey County for what we were able to accomplish around some of the challenge, we, challenges we saw during COVID. And I know that that's all on our staff. So I wanted to share that back with staff and say thank you, knowing that we're, we're eighteen, nineteen months into this thing and, uh, know that folks are talking about you and the amazing work that you've done. Uh, also wanted to thank our community Also wanted to thank our community for all the wonderful events that took place this weekend for Halloween. Tonight, there's another one for Dia de los Muertos in Gonzalez, starting at 5 o'clock. There'll be an event in Centennial Park. So just encourage folks to get out there if you're near Gonzalez tonight and enjoy the festivities, learn about some culture on the, on the Mexican side about how we celebrate those who have gone ahead of us, remember them and celebrate their lives. So that event will be this evening. Congratulations to everybody who helped make that one possible, but there were incredible ones in every valley city this weekend. And so I wanted to thank everybody who made those possible so that our communities could come together in a safe way outdoors. Lastly, did just want to briefly touch on actually two issues. One is the redistricting maps for the state of California were released. They're not calling them maps, they're calling them visualizations this morning, and I've already put in a letter of concern as both the Senate District and the Assembly District that they've put up there, split the Salinas Valley in half. And so I just encourage folks to take a look at those and let your opinions be known. I had a very strong reaction to those initial maps, again, visualizations. But I think I may be bringing something forward for the board to consider in terms of taking a position on that division. And lastly, yesterday, we had a major event in South County where a line was, a fiber line between Chular and Salinas. And it was a lesson. It really knocked out all connectivity for us from, it's Chular South, there was no cell phone connection. Landlines were out, there was no getting to 911 in many instances. And so I just hope that staff, I know I've seen some emails floating today, will be looking at creating redundancies to make sure that, to the extent that we can as government, make sure that we don't fall back into a position where we end up in this sort of a mode. I know with the community, I'll be asking folks to sort of reflect on what that 18 hours felt like and ask yourself if you're in that position for three days, seven days, given the panel I was recently able to host at R C R C with some of our military professionals who said the next front will look like this, where folks will target our infrastructure, our connectivity. We want to make sure we're prepared and that folks can be self-aware in these situations to share a little bit of the worst. You know, folks yesterday could not call when they broke down on the side of the freeway for help. So I saw a mother walking with her young children alongside the freeway just outside of Solada to get into town after 5 o'clock. So it was greatly concerning to me. We were able to get her ride, but as we continue to reflect on what happened yesterday, I hope we can help be part of that solution. I know not on, on all, all, it's not all on our shoulders as a county, but I think we need to be a partner in the solution. And so I think staff are looking into that to the extent possible. And again, just encourage everybody to share the message of preparation, as I think that would have gone a long way yesterday, and it's a good opportunity to share that continuing need to be prepared. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I apologize for my lengthy comments today.
I think they were quite important, Supervisor. Next up, we've got Supervisor Phillips for board comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When Supervisor Lopez returned my call late, late yesterday afternoon because he couldn't go in, he was telling about being in the dark ages. I told him, welcome to my world, you know, so he used to all this new fandango stuff. But anyway, I too want to wish all the veterans, Happy Veterans Day, along with my other colleagues. They did a lot for our country. We, sometimes we don't recognize them enough. And this week, we got a real problem out on Castroville Boulevard near the high school where it gets almost completely blocked up. And so Public Works, Mr. Vonnegut is gonna work with us in the school district to see if we could, we're meeting this later this week to see what kind of solutions we can come up with that. And I did want to mention on Monday, I spent the morning in the rain a little bit, but it was well worth it with the new Colonel from Army Corps of Engineers. We were out on the Paharo River Levy with Colonel Kevin Arnett representatives, and he brought all his staff people who've been working on the revision of the Paharo River Levy. And we had our representative from Water Resource Agency, representatives from the Army Corps of Engineers, as well as representative from Congressman Panetta's office. So we're working as a team now rather than bashing each other like we did eight or nine years ago. We're working on a team to get that project done. So it was a good morning spent. So with that, thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll leave you.
All right, I have one final Chair comment. It is Yuri Anderson's, my chief of staff's birthday today, so just give her a shout out. We all rely on staff around us to keep us organized and pulled together and up to speed on the thousands and thousands of documents that come before us every week. And I could not do it without the team that I have this year. And I just want to wish Yuri a very well deserved break today and a happy birthday. All right, hopefully she's not watching. Do we have any readout from closed session today?
We have no readout, Chair, and I do just want to comment on the, on the Veterans Parade, just for the benefit of the public. I'm sure the supervisors all know it is perfectly appropriate for all the supervisors to attend a ceremonial event such as the parade. You just can't talk amongst yourselves about business that may come before the board. So I just wanted to explain that mostly for the benefit of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. And so there was no readout from Board of Supervisors closed session nor in-home supportive services public authority closed session.
That is correct.
All right. And so we will now adjourn our Board of Supervisors meeting as well as our in-home supportive services public authority meeting. We do not have a regular meeting scheduled for next week. It is possible that we would call a special meeting next week. However, our next regularly scheduled meeting is Tuesday, November 16th, and we will see you all back here then. Thank you.